That's me recording. I'm having trouble getting the stream up, so I want to have a backup. Apologies.
Okay.
Nick, do you want a couple of minutes to try to troubleshoot it before we get started?
I just got to input some information and find it off the YouTube site. It should only take me a few minutes. I can catch up.
Okay. All right. Sorry. All right, so call this meeting a order this Monday, June 28th, 2021. And we can stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic. For which it stands.
A nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay. All right. Heather, you can take the role.
Commissioner Alziger.
In Mount Pleasant, Isabella, Michigan.
Commissioner Simon.
In the city of Mount Pleasant, Isabella County, state of Michigan.
Commissioner Gillis.
Mount Pleasant, Isabella, Michigan.
Commissioner Ronan.
The city of Mount Pleasant, the county of Isabella, and the great state of Michigan. Thank you.
Commissioner Tolles.
City of Mount Pleasant, Isabella County, state of Michigan.
Vice Mayor Perschbacher.
City of Mount Pleasant, the county of Isabella, and the state of Michigan.
And Mayor Joseph.
City of Mount Pleasant, county of Isabella, and the state of Michigan. Okay. Tonight, we don't have any proclamations or presentations, but do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? I don't see any hands up. So at this time, we'll do the public input on agenda items. If you're with us by phone, you can hit star nine, and if you're with us on the Zoom call, you can go to the bottom of your screen and hit the raise hand button. And just ask that people state their name and their address for the record. Major Ridley, did we have any emailed comments?
We do have one mayor, but it's related to the public hearing.
Okay.
Hold off on it.
I don't see any hands up, and so at this time, I'll close the public input on the agenda items, and then we'll go into receipt of petitions and communications.
The only items we have on this section of the agenda tonight are the report on pending items, and then the main minutes from the Downtown Development Authority.
Thank you, Major Ridley. Next, we have our consent calendar. Are there any items that need to be removed from the consent calendar tonight? Okay. Seeing no hands or any items. Major Ridley, would you like to go through the consent calendar?
Yes, we just have five items for you tonight on the consent calendar. We're recommending approval of the minutes of your regular meeting and the closed session of June 14th. Thirdly, we have a contract related to the next step in removing the tree protrusions near the airport. And this would occur on land where the irrigation easements were recently obtained. So approval of this resolution tonight would allow the city manager to sign the MDOT contract, which will cover 95% of the engineering fees for the work related to the bids for the tree removal. The next item is based on that grant funding in the prior agenda item. This next contract would allow the mayor and the clerk to sign a contract with Mead and Hunt. And what Mead and Hunt would do would provide the engineering services for the bid work related to the tree removal. And 95% of that cost would be funded by that grant. So the net cost to the city would be $1,433 out of that $28,642 contract. And then lastly, we have the approval of payrolls and warrants.
Thank you, Major Ridley. Commissioner Tolles?
Motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
And Commissioner Alziger?
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Any discussion? All right, I don't see any hands, so we'll go into roll call vote on the consent calendar as presented.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Commissioner Alziger?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolles?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillis?
Yes.
Commissioner Simon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perschbacher?
Yes.
Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Good. All right. Consent calendars been passed. Next on the agenda is our first public, first and only public hearing tonight. It's the public hearing ordinance to amend Chapter 1005 and Chapter 91, animals of the Code of Ordinances, and consider approval of the same. Major Ridley, did you want to give a brief overview before I open the public hearing?
Yes, thank you. I would just briefly mention that you'll recall that at your May work session, we discussed these proposed amendments to the animal ordinance. And staff has been working on this proposed ordinance regarding health and safety issues related primarily to outdoor cats. And we have an increasing number of instances in the city where this is becoming a growing concern. And we've been able to utilize our partnerships with various entities to address many of the areas. But the staff has included that an additional tool to be used primarily for education and coordinated solutions with our partners would be helpful to the staff. And we recognize that there's not just one solution to this issue, that there are a number of things that need to come into play to address this issue appropriately. But the staff believes that this would be an additional tool that would be helpful to begin to address the issues. And would like the ability to try that. And as I indicated in my cover memo, we would be happy to report back to you on the effectiveness of it after six months, like we've done with many of our recent ordinance changes, if this is approved this evening. So we're recommending you hold the public hearing and then consider approval of the proposed changes as presented.
Thank you, Major Ridley. At this time, I will open the public hearing. And so if you're with us by phone, you can hit star nine. Or if you're with us on the Zoom call, you can hit the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen. Major Ridley, you mentioned we had a comment emailed about the public hearing.
Yes, Mayor, there's a letter that was forwarded to me regarding the public hearing. That is quite lengthy, but what I can do, if you would like, is I can start reading it. And when we get to the five-minute mark, I guess I would stop at that point, since that's what we would typically do with public comment. So I will get started if that's okay with you. So the letter is from, let me go to the bottom to see who it's from. Amanda Tilletson, the Executive Director of the Humane Animal Treatment Society. And the letter says, Dear Commissioners, this letter is in response to the recently proposed animal ordinance changes aimed at addressing the city's outdoor cat population. While some parts of this letter may seem critical, I want to be clear speaking on behalf of the HATS organization that we are thrilled the city is taking steps to help the cats living in this community. The following definitions will assist readers. Community cats, unowned cats who live outdoors, also called feral cats, are generally not socialized or friendly to people. They live full, healthy lives with their feline families called colonies in their outdoor homes. They may be fed by humans or scavengers for their own resources. Trapped neuter return. Cats are humanely trapped and returned to a veterinarian to be neutered and vaccinated. After recovery, the cats are returned to their home, their colony outdoors. TNR or trapped neuter return improves the quality of life for feral cats, improves their relationships with the people who live near them, and decreases the size of colonies over time. Before addressing the proposed ordinance, it is important for city staff and commissioners to understand the problem, possible solutions, and our history helping animals in the community. While residents may complain about cats being a nuisance on their property, these complaints are not the problem, rather they are symptoms of the problem. The true issue that needs to be addressed is the large number of unaltered outdoor cats and the public's perception of how to help them. This issue has far more to do with the actions of the people rather than the actions of the animals. In other words, human action inaction is leading to cat overpopulation, and we must give our community members the knowledge and tools to help resolve this issue. There are several ways we can first alter our views on this issue. First is choosing the right language that accurately describes the approach. When discussing cat overpopulation, we are looking to manage the issue, not to solve it once and for all, or eradicate outdoor cats. These are unachievable measures. Second, not all cats belong in a shelter. Cats are killed two to one compared to dogs in our nation's shelters because there are simply not enough homes. The reality is there are better options for outdoor, healthy cats. I'm sorry, for healthy outdoor cats. Cats who have adapted to outdoor living can continue to do so successfully. A simple spay, neuter, surgery, food supply, and an inexpensive shelter could be all that a cat in this situation may need, especially if they are unsocialized or feral. Third, community cats can thrive in their outdoor homes and live harmoniously with humans when managed appropriately. When cats are spayed, neutered, mating behaviors that result in community complaints such as roaming, spraying, fighting, and yowling are greatly reduced or eliminated. Small managed colonies are not a threat to public health if the cats are vaccinated and the property owner takes measures to care for them properly. Finally, community cats are wild creatures that deserve to live among us. One person did not create the feline overpopulation issue, and one person cannot resolve it. If we work together, we can humanely reduce their numbers through a community approach of spaying, neutering all outdoor cats. This is a joint mission between those who are animal lovers and those who care about the city's cleanliness and orderliness. Before moving on to possible approaches, you must first know about the vacuum effect. The vacuum effect occurs when a portion of an animal population is permanently removed from their home range naturally or by the hands of humans. The result is a temporary dip in population levels. The initial population lived in that location because there were resources such as shelter, food, and water. Once emptied, this still resource-rich habitat, the vacuum, inevitably attracts other members of the same species from neighboring areas. Both the individual, both the new individuals and any remaining members of the original population then reproduce. What's more, they reproduce at higher rates to fill the habitat and take advantage of the available resources. Before long, the area fills up to capacity again, as if the animals were never removed at all. The vacuum effect occurs across many species, including cats. Even the strictest feeding bans on cats won't change anything. And that's the end of the five minutes.
Thank you, Nancy. It looks like Amanda Tilletson is actually with us right now, and so I can recognize her if she'd like to follow up on her letter.
That would probably be more than five minutes, then. Was that her letter?
Yes, it was.
That was her letter, but I forwarded it to Nancy to be read because I did not know Amanda was here.
Yeah, I think if Amanda would like to follow up on her letter, I mean, she's with us, so.
Well, I must disagree because you can't have a red letter read for five minutes and then want public comment again.
Well.
I mean.
I don't know that that's.
I think maybe you should limit it, Mayor, to maybe a two-minute follow-up, then.
Well, I'd like to give Amanda a few minutes to just talk.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi. Well, I will not take much of your time. I wasn't aware that you would read the letter aloud, so I will try to make this brief for you. I hope you can take the time to read through that again, adjust the information. There is a lot of information in there because this topic is fairly broad, and there is not a one-size-fits-all approach to it necessarily. But I will just kind of summarize to the end, since you've already read a portion of the beginning. Basically, our stance on the ordinance as it is written is we would like some further discussion on it, and we would like to be involved in that discussion. Mainly because the ordinance was actually rewritten with our name in it. It has the Humane Animal Treatment Society's name in it several times. We were not consulted on that as well. So we would like to just take a step back real quick, have some of the main stakeholders that are a part of coming to a solution for this issue, get together and talk about some of the possibilities going forward to make sure that we're all on the same page, we're actually addressing the issue appropriately. Because as you'll see in my letter, I'm not sure that this particular ordinance, the way it is worded, is truly addressing the cat overpopulation problem. It may be addressing some other things, but it is not addressing the real issue at hand. I won't take up any more of your time unless you had any questions for me.
Thank you, Amanda. I don't see any other hands up in the attendees section, so I think at this time, I will close the public hearing. And I'll recognize Commissioner Alziger.
I'd like to move that we table this and do as Amanda Tilletson suggested and give them some input, so maybe the ordinance could be slightly adjusted.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor to table. Commissioner Tolles?
I'd like to also propose a motion to proceed with this.
Okay. So. Like to take care of the, if there's a second for Commissioner Alziger's motion, we have to deal with the first motion first, so. Vice Mayor Perschbacher?
I would like to second Commissioner Alziger's motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to table and a second, and we have to deal with that first. So opening this up for discussion. Commissioner Tolles, your hand is up.
I just wanted to make one quick point on here. I'm looking. The speaker is talking about reference, and I see one reference in 9109 that talks about neglected or abandoned animals that refers to animal control and Humane Animal Treatment Society. I think this is way overdue, and we need to proceed with this, you know. We're tying our people's hands that work for us to sit here and enforce this stuff, and we could be changing this forever. This is already drafted. We already discussed it, and I think we should move with it and vote on it tonight and get it done.
Commissioner Alziger?
I appreciate Pete's comments. And there's many times I feel the same way to just get it done, but I do think we should respect a partner in this issue and give that group a little credence to maybe help the city staff adjust it a little bit. Thank you.
Mayor, I think Director Loria has a comment, if he may.
Yeah, of course, of all the meeting.
Am I unmuted?
Yep, I think you're moved in.
Okay. I don't want to get into any debates at all regarding this ordinance. But there has, there has been many times where, well, several times where we have worked with organizations. And I just want to be clear that HATS was mentioned in there as a resource. That's why HATS is mentioned. Not as a, not as a group that is going to enforce the ordinance or take care of these properties, or addressing these properties. I, again, I think there's a difference between ordinance enforcement and who does it, and the authority that it gives versus HATS providing resources to do that. I think there's a big distinction there. Whatever you decide, I'm fine with. But. I better stop there.
Okay. Next, Commissioner Gillis?
I also think we should proceed with this ordinance. This ordinance does address both dogs and cats and the maximum that one household can have. I also see that the HATS reference is not that they suggested or collaborated or worked. It was a measure of dealing with the feral cats after they've been caught, that they would be, you know, taken to the animal control. I do understand their policies. From someone who lives in a neighborhood that has feral cats and a bio, last year had 15 feral cats in my neighborhood that would not only tear up every bit of sand that you have anywhere to use for a litter box, to getting into garages and using boats as a scratching post, to people dropping cats off with this colony that only ended up populating more, to neighbors, elderly neighbors, and some other neighbors continuously feeding them. These cats are not in good health. They, one of them is missing an eye. Most of them are limping around. They are not healthy cats. And I can tell you from previous experience, and I would hope you would take what I'm saying to you. I used to work for the city. I walked into every parcel in the city to read a water meter, reader. So I have walked into every commercial, apartment, neighborhood, home. And there are different colonies in certain parts of the city, but they don't exist in other parts of the city. And I won't, you can probably even determine where the most populated feral cats are. And I think it's a shame to not only allow them to live like that and because it is, I am an animal lover, and it hurts me to see them limping or with one eye and wondering if they're. It's very disturbing in the factor of having to see these cats not being taken care of and then breeding and then also damaging property and the safety issues. So I do believe that we have to, this ordinance is nothing but holding people accountable for the ones that are feeding these feral animals. They are giving them a place to house, and they are giving them sustenance by feeding them, thus getting them to populate and have more kittens. And so our staff has worked hard and long on this. And when we introduce the public hearing, if any of the commissioners had some feelings strong enough, because I know there's been two commissioners that feel that we should look at the, what HATS wants, collaborate or wants to change. But this is something that code enforcement will work with our community members to tell them that it is not in the best interest of the cats or the neighborhood to continue to feed them and house them, and it's not being a good neighbor. And then they're held accountable. They don't want to claim the cat. They just want to feed it. And I know their passion as an animal lover myself, but this is a problem in certain neighborhoods, and it is a very distinct and unsafe problem. So I think this is a very small step to try to give our code enforcement something they can use to work with the community members that house many cats. We're not talking two feral cats. We're not talking three feral cats. We're talking a dozen or more. And I don't think anyone would want their neighbor housing a dozen feral crats next to them. I think you would be much more sympathetic if you lived in my neighborhood and saw what we dealt with. So I would please, I beg you, other fellow commissioners, to allow our code enforcement and staff, start with this small step on trying to make progress in trying to deal with the overpopulation of feral cats. Just please consider that there's not a lot of meat to that ordinance. That is so slim down to hardly anything. We should be having, we should be complimenting our code enforcement and our director and our staff for working on this and getting something that holds people accountable for creating the large populations. It's not the cats. It's the people that are feeding and housing them. So I would hope you take my personal experience as much as some other considerations and give staff a little bit of a tool to work on these problems for a small solution. It may need to be revisited and trying a different approach. But, and this also does put a limit on how many dogs and cats people can house in their own homes. So I would please ask you to allow staff and code enforcement to do the job. It has been a community problem. There has been several community people that have had to complain about this. We've just haven't ever had the time, actually, because our staff is overworked, to get down and then present it to the city commission. There's been a lot of work to this. So I think it's a real injustice not to pass this ordinance this evening. So I hope would you, the rest of the city commissioners, I know Commissioner Alziger and obviously Commissioner Perschbacher, well, I would assume supports it since you made the motion and then seconded it. I would hope that we would be able to continue with this small portion of a very large problem. So thank you.
Commissioner Simon?
Yeah, thank you. I do have a few things written down. I wanted to make sure I had research prepared, and I don't just babble. But I do want to tailor my comments to the motion at hand, whether to table this or not rather than the amendment itself. But I want to thank Amanda, I want to make sure I get her name right, Amanda Tilletson, for coming and providing some expertise on the topic. I do want to highlight, I understand that HATS being included in the amendment was to provide some resource. But I also want to make that point that if HATS doesn't feel comfortable with this amendment the way that it's drafted, they're our local expert, and they're who we're going to collaborate with if we implement this. So if they don't feel comfortable, I think that's something we should really listen to. I, of course, want to see a solution, but I'm worried that the way that this is drafted isn't going to find one, and it's going to have harmful consequences on the animals, like Amanda has said, but also on community members. Feral cats, by definition, aren't used to. Feral cats by definition aren't used to human contact. Capturing them can be difficult. Homing them can be difficult and getting them adopted out of shelters. So we, you know, it says in our correspondence that we don't want to see them euthanized. But if we can't get them rehomed, like Commissioner Gillis has said, this isn't a few feral cats. This is a lot. And while I commend hats for the work that they do, I'm worried that they're not going to have enough resources to either keep these cats in their facilities long term or to get these many homed. So I don't think that this is the best for the feral cats. Like they've said, they're not at risk or and can thrive for living outdoors. I think another solution would be more beneficial to them like TNR. This makes them healthier when they are neutered. They can no longer reproduce, which controls stabilizes and reduces the population in a way that isn't harmful to the cats. It reduces the noise and the smell like the residents have been complaining about. They can no longer produce testosterone, which creates the smell. And the mating and fighting is what creates the noise. So this will all be reduced. They're less likely to wander and get hurt. So they're more likely to thrive and creates the solution that we are looking for. Additionally, the way that this is drafted, I think can be harmful to residents. The limit is set so low that many people in the community surpassed this limit and there's no harm to the community or the animals. The way that it's intended for enforcement would be inconsistent, which can target residents disproportionately and drafting policy that way makes me really hesitant. And I don't feel like I can support an amendment that would say that I would be fined. I have more than three cats that I would be fined. Just assume that I wouldn't be, but other community members would be. I think that's disproportionate and unfair. So I'll stop my comments because this has gotten more into the amendment than the than what we've motioned. But I would be really hesitant to support this and I think we should listen to our local experts in the research. Thanks.
Commissioner Ronan.
Yeah, I'm just not an expert in this issue, to be honest. So I apologize. You know, I'm not a zoologist. I'm not someone who studies cats or stuff. I mean, what sells me though is when we have someone who's an expert who comes on board and says, hey, we can tweak it a bit to make it better. I guess I'm sort of sensitive to that. So I'll probably, my guess is that if we table it, what we're saying is get these people together who know, who study this stuff and have everybody work together. Is that the, just, so I mean, I probably support just getting the experts. And I realize it's an ordinance that needs to be enforced and that doesn't require animal experts. But I mean, it just seems like the win-win to me if we've got someone who's willing to spend the time to look at it. But I, anyway, sorry.
Commissioner Tolles.
Again, I see three places where hats is referenced here, which Director Loya also mentioned and Commissioner Gillis mentioned. That's just a resource, just adds, it stays here, Isabella County Animal Control. It's the same thing. I don't know where you're coming from, the rest of the commissioners are coming from, that these are experts. They're experts probably in cats, but not in enforcement. We had our staff work on this and now we're wasting time on this. We can solve this problem, just eliminate where it mentions hats four times in this ordinance and just take it out if they don't want to be part of it. It's very simple. We got an important agenda tonight to talk about replacing a city manager and we're wasting time on this. You already had staff draft this. They already have a problem. Let's see if this improves the problem. The problem is still there. Hats has been there and we still have the problem. So I'd like to call a question and move this to vote and let's get done with it. I'm done wasting time.
We do have a motion to call the question. That needs a second. Commissioner Gillis. So with no second, I believe the motion to tape or the motion to call a question does not proceed. And so it will continue discussion. Commissioner Allsager.
I just have a question for Nancy. If we do table the motion tonight, could the city staff come to us in two weeks with a new motion?
I don't know because I'm not sure what the proposed changes would be. I see that Assistant Fire Chief Doug Lobzinger has his hand up and he did all of the work on this and had the conversations with other partners. So if the mayor is willing, we could ask Mr. Lobzinger to chime in on that.
Yeah, have Mr. Lobzinger come in.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, Doug.
Well, I would be glad to talk with any organization about some of the animal issues. But I want to remind, ask you, what is it that we're looking for? We could create all the ordinances in the world and we are not going to take care of the animal problem in Mount Pleasant. It's not for us to take care of. That's another organization's goals or somebody else's. What my goal is, is to preserve the integrity of the neighborhoods. And I need to be able to have some tools in order to help achieve that. And a lot of the things that the Director of Hats said is true. You're not going to find one system to fix this problem. There are many community cat foundations that are established across the United States. And you can find some that agree with this program and some that agree with this another program. You can, the trap neutering and release is the most successful program to manage the feral cats. And they can live peacefully. But there's some facts that are left out of most of the reports that I found. And that is, that's on your level of success. And in order for one of those programs to work, they need to neuter, trap neuter and release 75% of the feral cats in a six month period. And if we don't have the resources to do that, we're not going to be successful. So I understand that they're probably looking for resources, so they can do more of that. And I would be more than welcome to be a part of that. I think that's a great idea. But again, it's pretty unrealistic at this point in the venue. I think this is a starting point. I think this needs to have a lot of attention to it. But at the same point, what is it that you want code enforcement doing with their time? This is an issue, but it's one of many. And we need to have some tools that we can help address some of the issues that we face that right now we can't. And I don't know. I don't have any tools to do that right now. I don't have those resources. But we're not going to fix that problem. I'd be glad to talk to people. I went out, I'm kind of disappointed she, but she didn't come and talk to me about it because we had talked about it earlier. And I went to her, I've been to the Cat Karma Cafe, other people that I know that are cat lovers, animal lovers, as I am. But again, we're probably not going to solve that tonight.
So Commissioner Allsager, I'm not sure that we would be able to have something different for you in two weeks, not knowing what the proposed solutions might be.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gillis.
Yes. First off, I take offense to Commissioner Simon's comment right after I got done speaking that she doesn't speak and babble. I hope that wasn't intended for me, but I know I've had commissioners say unkind things while we were on a thing. So, but I'm sorry if I have something else to say. And what I am going to say, with the 15 feral cats that were in my neighborhood, the solution was I could come to animal control. I could get a trap, a live trap, and I could catch the feral cats and I could take them to animal control and they would spay them and then I could return them to my neighborhood. So I would just like to, how one person or someone in the neighborhood that is dealing with feral cats is now on their responsibility to trap, neuter and release? Because this is what was said as one of the preferred ways to manage cats. But that doesn't fall on the people who are feeding the cats and housing the cats because they don't care how the cats are destroying the neighborhood. It is the other neighbors that live next to them that have to deal with the 15 or 24 feral cats. There was an extreme population close to Mission by the, on the other side of the Pixie and that neighborhood where
Arnold Street Commissioner Gillis.
Yes, Arnold Street.
Cats at least at that residence.
How many?
Thirty.
Thirty, okay. And you are tying the hands of our staff to address that at all. And I can tell you again, the onus of trying to deal with this with someone who's having things ruined in their properties is for you to go get a live trap or you to purchase one and you catch the cats. Because the resources, even at animal control, they are not there. They do not have enough staff so that they can go out to community members, community neighborhoods where it's being destroyed and the population's increasing. And these cats are limping and have, have problems. I'm not, these are not healthy cats and they do fight with each other. And so I don't know how you think one, these neighborhoods are, problems are going to be solved without the smallest measure like this, which is to hold the people accountable that are feeding and housing them. So, but like I say before, I am sorry that some people interpret this as babbling and that is, that is how I speak and I try to fill in the gaps of my experience being 59 years old and lived here all my life and in a neighborhood that has this problem. So I really take offense that people would consider me that they don't want to hear what I have to say. But the public did vote me in in this situation. So I have every right as a city commissioner to talk about my experiences because I am representing the public. So, thank you.
Commissioner Ronan. George, we can't hear you.
Commissioner Ronan, you're muted.
I certainly didn't anticipate, I didn't listen to her. I listened to everything Olivia, Commissioner Simon said. And I wasn't thinking of you at all. So I apologize. I mean, I, it didn't even dawn on me that there was any reference to you. So I'm not tracking this too much and I think I'm getting sidetracked. I mean, is there, oftentimes when you move to table something, I think it does result in a vote right away, doesn't it? Or am I missing something? I mean, oftentimes tabling it means just that, tabling it. So I don't even know if it needs discussion after someone votes the table. Usually you say it's tabled. Ask Heather. I don't know how tabling works perhaps. But usually you say, I go to table this, it automatically stops discussion. It goes for a vote and if it's tabled, it's tabled. But maybe I'm wrong. Maybe Robert's rules works differently in a commission or something. But it's going on and on.
Yeah, I appreciate the reference. I wanted to make sure we had some discussion before we didn't have, I guess, any discussion on a matter since, since we want staff to have sort of direction if we're going to table it in terms of what are we looking for the next time we meet? If it is tabled.
And Mayor, I noticed that Director Loya has his hand up again. So could we see what his concern is for clarification at this point?
Sure.
Paul, you can go ahead.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Just, I want to address the trap spade in return. It's not mentioned in the ordinance because it doesn't have to be mentioned in the ordinance for us to be able to do it. So it's giving us the authority to trap the animal, to have it evaluated by a veterinarian. And then if the veterinarian says this is a healthy cat and we can't find a home for it or it's determined that these cats are going to be returned, they're spayed, neutered and returned. We can, we can't name every program in an ordinance and that was done intentionally so it doesn't just tie our hands to that specific method to address a problem. So if it just said, you can only trap spade neuter and you have an unhealthy cat that is diseased or hurt beyond humane condition, we have the authority again, well, we, the veterinarian has the authority then to euthanize the animal. So because trap spade in return isn't in the ordinance, doesn't mean that that isn't the effective tool. The ordinance has given us the ability to handle the animal that is not claimed, that is feral, that is causing, that are causing the issues. And then the only other thing I want to address is about the three and three cats. That was only to bring this in line with the zoning ordinance. Well, this wasn't something that Public Safety cooked up to only have three cats. It just is, it brings this ordinance in line with what our zoning ordinance currently says.
Thanks, Director Loya. Commissioner Ronan. Okay. I don't see any hands up and I think at this time we should go into a roll call vote on, on the vote to table this. But I guess if we do, I guess if the vote to table is successful, I guess I'd like to, you know, we're tabling to have more conversations with hats and other community partners. Is there anything I guess that needs to be added to that? Okay. All right. Heather, if you would, please.
Commissioner Tolles?
No.
Commissioner Simon?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillis? Commissioner Gillis? Commissioner Allsager?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hirschbacher?
Yes.
Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Motion passes. Five, two.
All right. Move on to the next item. Commissioner Tolles, is this related to the?
It's related to this motion that we just finished up on. Because you tabled it and sent it back and I want Manager Ridley, when staff reviews this, that the references to hat as a resource are removed because they're claiming they didn't approve this. So I would, if you're going to bring this back, I want that removed. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is item number six, which is to consider the contract extension with Isabella County for the material recovery facility. And I'll let Manager Ridley give us an overview.
Yes, as the commission is aware, the city and the county have had numerous contracts for the operation of the material recovery facility dating back to the 1990s. The last signed agreement was updated and changed
The last signed agreement was updated and changed um fairly drastically in two thousand and eight. And then in two thousand and twelve, the county administrator at that time sent a notice to the city providing termination of the contract. Not because they really wanted to end the contract, but because they wanted to set in process. Um an opportunity to renegotiate some of the terms of the agreement. So since that time, two amendments were approved by the city and the county extending the contract in order for that renegotiation to occur. After some of those discussions between the city and the county occurred, no new contract was appro- was proposed to either of the entities. As it was determined that the current contract really was working well for both parties and its residents. So um we continued to move forward. And I think both the city and the county believed that the automatic renewal of the contract was in place. And it wasn't until recently when we were researching something in the contract. That we realized those amendments actually had a firm end date in it. And so what we're bringing to you tonight is a third amendment to the contract. That would in essence reinstate that automatic renewal provision. Because this operation has worked well for both of the entities and our residents. And so we're authorized, we're asking you to authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign the third amendment. That would reinstate that automatic annual renewal. The county commission did consider this amendment at their meeting, I believe it was last week. And reaffirmed their commitment to the partnership in the existing contract and have approved the amendment. So we're asking for your approval this evening.
Commissioner Allsager?
I move to approve the third amendment to the joint operating agreement for the material recovery facility as presented.
Vice Mayor Perschbacher?
Um I will second her motion.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah, I don't know if this is an appropriate time to say this or not, but I I just wanted to do a shout out for the facility. I don't know if you know this, but um. Since the pandemic began, there's been like tons of people who've been doing gardening and stuff and I I admit, okay, I I've been one of them. Because you know, you get bored and you don't know what to do. And what they've done is they they had their whole recycling thing for free, for brush pickup and stuff like that, but I mean. Um you know, so I uh I have I'm gonna support it, but I'd also like to do a shout out to say, hey, great job for dealing with stuff during the pandemic in a helpful way. Um you know, really supportive of residents and.
Thank you, Commissioner Ronan. Um with no other hands up, I think we can go to a roll call vote on approving the contract.
Commissioner Gillis?
Yes.
Commissioner Allsager?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Commissioner Simon?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolles?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perschbacher?
Yes.
Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. And in a related note, item number seven is is consider a budget amendment for the material recovery facility. Majorly, did you have any comments to add?
Just briefly, um as you saw in the commission packet, the county recently informed us that two critical pieces of equipment at the material recovery facility need replacement as soon as possible. And that's the baler and the waste scale system. And the two projects to total total uh are estimated at just under two hundred thousand dollars. And the county has received approximately sixty-eight thousand dollars from the tribal two percent distribution process. So that leaves a net amount of approximately a hundred and thirty thousand, hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars to be shared by the county and the city. And the city's share is based on the percent of recyclable materials we delivered last year, which is just under twenty-five four percent. So we have a reserve set aside because the contract requires that. So we're merely recommending that you approve a budget amendment of thirty-one thousand dollars, which is our twenty-four percent of the cost. That would move the money from the equipment replacement reserve to the operational line item. So that we can provide appropriate funding to the county when this project is completed.
Thank you, Andrew Ridley. Vice Mayor Perschbacher? Amy, I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
Sorry, I move to approve a budget amendment of thirty-one thousand from the so solid waste equipment replacement fund to the MRF. Activity line item for the city's portion of the equipment replacement costs.
Commissioner Allsager?
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment. Um any discussion? Commissioner Tolles?
Yeah, I don't have any comments.
All right, I don't see any hands up, so we can go to a roll call vote on approving the budget amendment for the material recovery facility.
Commissioner Simon?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillis?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolles?
Yes.
Commissioner Allsager?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perschbacher?
Yes.
Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Uh next on our agenda is item number ten, which is to consider a change in use for the Broadway in of funds for Broadway Central. Uh Major Ridley?
Yes, should recall earlier this year, you approved a budget allocation from the Economic Initiatives Fund. For many items related to appearance improvements and activities at Broadway Central. Which you'll recall is the one block section of Broadway between Maine and University that we closed to vehicular traffic. One of the items that was funded in that approval was sixty-three hundred dollars for the purchase of concrete chess and checker tables. But as we've reviewed the usage of the area and the desire to bring true activity to the area. Our downtown development director, Michelle Span seller, is recommending that that sixty-three hundred dollars. Instead be used this year to hold weekly trivia nights on Thursday evenings. Um because this is more of a one-time type expenditure instead of um the chess and checker tables that could be reused. We felt it was important to bring this back to you for your consideration instead of moving forward with that change. So we're recommending you approve the reallocation to trivia night activities as recommended. And Michelle is with us this evening, if you have any questions for her.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah, I I'd like to have a little bit of a broader discussion about this, particularly because of the memo we've under the memo we got earlier. Um I I what happened actually with the idea of having the stage? And I mean, I I've talked to so many musicians. Who so I'd like to know which musicians you talked to who said their book and they wouldn't come down. Because I've talked to so many who will come down for free to play. I had talked to people about this and they were so excited. I mean, these are bands that typically are professional, I I I can. I've talked to maybe half a dozen. Um I've certainly talked to uh other musicians in the community. Um so I I I'd like to know what happened to the stage part, I. If if we can add back to this discussion, because I I'm a little annoyed by that.
Mayor, would you like me to um have Michelle come in to address that?
Yes, if you could.
As Michelle's coming in, um I guess I would first say that um we can still do the stage. Um we have not put the stage in because as Michelle's memo indicated, we were having a hard time finding people interested in utilizing it for free. And we did not want it to become an attractive nuisance. Um but Michelle, can you give some more details about that?
Sure, um good evening commissioners, first and foremost. Uh thanks for having me on. I I would first and foremost say, Commissioner Ronan, if you have uh names for musicians by all ears, I am open and I'd be happy to do that. Um I did reach out to musicians from um who are playing in other communities. And they are fairly booked up, now it doesn't mean that they can't fit in somewhere, um but. In order to do that, not everyone wants to be uh just simply donating their time. There might be some out there, but generally speaking, they were looking for uh a paid gig, if you will. And that was not something that we had looked to program. So I was looking to offer a trivia night that would be different from what other local communities are doing. But I am all in if you have musicians that you have names and phone numbers for, I'd be happy to reach out to them.
Right. Commissioner Ronan?
I I don't want to belabor this, but I'll be happy, before I leave my office tonight, I'll be happy to send an email with um specific names and people who would be interested. Um and many of them are in two or three bands, um and you know, I I so so they've talked to each other over Facebook, I mean. I don't know if you know it, but there are musicians who played uh. Once a week on YouTube throughout the pandemic for free. Um and you know, they have an audience and um just to sort of give back to the community, so I think there's lots, I anyway, I I've spoken too much, but I'll be happy to um forward those names. Uh but I would like to see if we're gonna vote for that, if we're gonna move in this direction, I'd also like to see that stage put back in and. Um you know, when you talk to the businesses downtown, they say there's nothing going on to attract people in the right. So so and I think, you know, having some of these musicians come down and play would be one of those things.
Vice Mayor Perschbacher?
Um I'm gonna go ahead with the motion so that we can move forward. So I moved to approve the reallocation of the Broadway Central funds of sixty-three hundred to sponsor weekly trivia games. Instead of the purchase of the checker chess tables.
Commissioner Ronan?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor and second, move ahead with the change of use of funds. Commissioner Tolles?
I will uh abstain from voting on this from the uh last budget that I had a conflict of interest on.
Okay. Any other discussion? Well, we'll say that uh as a chess player. I really like the idea of the chess tales, but um. Maybe there's more people interested in trivia out there, so. Be happy to support. Um. Uh I think we can go to a roll call vote on approving the change of use of funds.
Commissioner Allsager?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Commissioner Simon?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perschbacher?
Yes.
Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Motion has been carried. Um that brings us to announcements on city-related issues and new business. Commissioner Gillis?
I won't be joining the work session this evening, I just switched laptops and my uh PDF with some of the answers. That um were of the survey for Mr. Walsh. Um I don't have access to um so rather than um have commissioners uh may I think that I may be a pair of babbling. I would rather have my um notes and I will end up uh trying to get with Mr. Walsh either by phone. Or a Zoom meeting and give him my responses. But um for that matter, a uh I know you were looking for some input on the sessions or the meetings with Mr. Walsh. And I would be more available in the evening hours on the weekends rather than the daytime, because I do work a full-time job. So I did want to put that input on the work session. And unfortunately, I'm going to resign from the appointments committee. Um uh we have three people on the appointments committee, myself, Commissioner Perschbacher and Commissioner Allsager. And I know it's been hard to fill the positions. Um uh we I I've always been a recruitment, anyone that has seen me for the past five and a half years on this commission. Um I've been an active member recruiting and uh asking the public to go and put their application in. I was the chair, I think for three years of that committee. But um a couple of months ago, something really disturbing happened where we were speaking of trying to fill the appointments. And one of our members um primarily wanted to recruit people of uh the female gender and also from the Democratic Party. Um I do not feel comfortable with that, I believe we are a nonpartisan board for a reason. We don't declare being a Republican or a Democrat because we are here to serve our whole community. I have placed people on or you know um um. When I was on the appointments committee, I had approved people that were both for Republican Party-based or, you know, more conservative. And more liberal, I never consider uh gender. I um always just like to try to uh look at the application and and pick people from a diverse population to serve on our committees. But rather than um have that difference of opinion from the three, the two other commissioners I serve with. And I feel a lot of times my comments and my input in in the commission and also the work sessions and and also some of the the committee. Um isn't really valued, um so I regretfully, because I I very feel very. Much a service to our community because I've lived here all my life and raised my children here. But unfortunately, I will not any longer be able to serve on the appointments committee. So I just wanted to let people know that have actually applied and have actually been placed on uh committees. From both parties that I value all of your opinions and the diverse population we hear here in Mount Pleasant. And I hope you can understand uh why I have to do this and the. Unfortunately, how I feel I have somehow been disrespected on my opinions and and the way I present things. So I'm not gonna fight, uh just like Commissioner Tolles has said before. Um a lot of times uh our comments seem to be falling on deaf ears. It gives us a very hard time trying to serve when we we don't feel our. Uh or at least myself, my opinions valued or the facts or some of the experiences I've lived at. And participated here in Mount Pleasant. So I want to apologize to Commissioner Tolles that I won't be at the um work session and also obviously to Mr. Walsh. And I will just let that be there and we'll get to him and relay my answers and my thought out. Opinions on the selection of city manager. Thank you.
Okay, well Commissioner Gillis, I'd just like to uh make sure you get those, I guess, those answers to that survey to. I suppose either Nancy or or Mr. Walsh himself.
And like I say, I don't even have access it access to that on the computer, because I had a problem with the laptop I was using before. And this laptop doesn't have Adobe, so um I will surely get ahold of Mr. Walsh one way or another. And uh communicate my opinions and the survey results, thank you.
Any other announcements or new related business? Okay, um at this time, I will open up the public uh input on agenda and non-agenda items. And if you're with us by phone, you can hit star nine. Or if you're with us by Zoom, you can go to the bottom of your screen and hit the raise hand button. Uh Manager Ridley, do we have any emailed comments?
No, sir, no additional comments came in.
Okay, I don't see any hands up in the attendees, so I will close uh this public input section. Um at this time, uh we'll take a recess and we will reconvene in about uh five minutes for our discussion with Walsh Municipal Services. Uh regarding the city manager search.
Looks like you have everybody back, Mayor.
Thank you. So reconvene here for a work session here to talk with Frank Walsh of Walsh Municipal Services. Welcome, Frank.
Hey, thank you very much, Mayor. It's good to be back.
Good to have you with us. I think we just wanted to kind of jump into the questionnaire, I believe, right?
Right, yeah, yeah. And I'll, I'll try to get, walk through this. I've watched your whole meeting, so I know you've had an hour and twenty minutes already. So I'll try to walk through this as quickly as I can and get your feedback. So tonight, we're, it's a first step for putting together the community profile. The community profile is what is put out on all the publications. And the most important thing about it is to sell the, a lot of times what happens is people make the mistake of trying to sell the job. And what they forget is most people who are applying for this job know full well what a city manager does. You have to sell the community. You have to get someone excited about. And thankfully, Mount Pleasant's an easier sell because most people are very familiar with your community, so that helps. But the, the main attraction of this whole ten, ten-page document will be to attract candidates to the community. Fifty-four surveys have been set out, seven to the City Commission, twenty to the Department Heads, fifteen to community representatives, your legal counsel, union representatives, division directors, and one staff person in addition to that. The real meat and potatoes of the whole profile comes from this dialogue, of course, with the City Commission. The, the goal is to have a draft to you by July 5th. That'll be a week from tonight, so there's a lot of information for me to put together and get out to you. Have it finalized by the eighth and begin. We're going to stay right on schedule. I'm going to have this moving forward by the night. If we get bogged down at all tonight, as I've been doing this with communities for the last twenty-seven years, it happens under the opportunities and challenges and issues. Just please remember tonight, we have to be a team. We have to go at this recruitment as a team. As a city commissioner, you know, it's a two-way street. We're attracting candidates, but candidates, we, we have to do what we can to also attract the candidates and have it be a perfect marriage on both sides. Don't think of the opportunities and challenges as it has to be exactly how I envision it. It's a master plan document. It's a, it's a capital improvement document. It's a budget. So whatever goes in here is finalized. The opportunities and challenges, it's just a generic way of going about some of the issues that might be out, just some of the things you're working on. It's not going to be the blueprint for the new manager. It just gives them a snapshot of what's going on in your community. So with that, unless there's any questions, I'll go right into the salary portion. Usually, the communities ask me to come forward and give a recommendation for what I see out there in the recruiting area. I put together a survey of like communities, population size and salaries. In there, you have your current manager's salary. So Mayor, would you like me to give you what I see out there in the, in the climate as far as recruiting or recommendation? Or would you rather hear from just one of all, well, I guess all six of you think?
Yeah, um, well, I guess, you know, we, we filled out the survey, so maybe if we want to kind of give our input on what we saw.
Sure.
And then I'm certainly interested in, in what you have to say and what you see in the recruitment side.
Okay.
But.
Okay, so typically, and this is your meeting and you handle however you want to, but typically, I kind of facilitate this, but would you, would you rather do that as the chair?
Um, if you're more comfortable doing that, I, I think that that's why we're, we're having you here, Frank, so if you want to.
Okay, so we'll start right out with, are you mayor? Where are you on the scale on the salary?
Sure, I mean, I looked at what you had posted here and you know, kind of compared it to what we're currently paying our city manager. And I, I think, given what, you know, the, the financial climate is, I think we have to either go right around what the same what we're paying or maybe a little more, so I'm probably in the one-twenty-five to one-thirty.
Okay. Okay, and would you prefer I call everybody Vice Mayor Perschbacher? Or could we use first names to get through this a little quicker?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, you can use my first name.
Okay, you certainly call me Frank, please. So go ahead, go ahead, Amy, on salary.
Okay, so now does this salary, does this include benefits or is this just straight salary?
Just straight salary. The survey in front of you is straight salary.
Okay, and the population, obviously, because we have a university in our city limits, I think that maybe this population might be inflated slightly because of that. I don't believe that we have twenty-six residents, permanent, not transient, but permanent residents that live in the city. I think that we have a lot of students that put this, the city down as their main pres, permanent residence for the two or three years that they're not living on campus.
Okay.
That, that would be the only thing. The, the only other city on here that has a university, Dr., or George, Dr. Ronan and I were talking, Commissioner Ronan, is Marquette. That's the only other one with a university, and theirs is probably a little inflated also because of students. But I do, you know, so I look at those two, though I would, it looks like we're pretty similar in what we pay a salary. I do believe that we pay low that more than we pay accurate. I think that we play, pay low on that end because of the changes that, that come with the job and things like that. So I'm probably in that twenty-five to twenty-eight thousand dollar range.
Okay, thank you very much. Mary?
What I wrote down was kind of the same thing that we have to at least be in your second category and then possibly in your third category, which would be the one-twenty-five to one-thirty, and that's partly because Nancy would have been in that third category if we would have given her a raise last year.
Okay, Olivia?
Yeah, I agree with all the other commissioners reasoning. I think I would be in that third category as well, the one-twenty-five to one-thirty.
Thank you, and George?
Yeah, I was disappointed by your comparisons, Frank. I, I think your comparators are located more in urban areas. They have much more industry. So I, I just don't think, thinking about Walker, for example, or Madison Heights and Monroe, you know, they're located right outside urban areas. I don't think they reflect the same type of community that Mount Pleasant is. So I hope going forward, we can be sensitive to that a little bit. But I, I go with the one-twenty-five to one-thirty, but I have the same concerns that Amy had. So I'd probably be within that same category. I hope we have some sensitivity to this going forward.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. Yeah, and I just, just completed the Marquette, and the Marquette recruitment was one-twenty-five to one-thirty. Pete?
I don't think he heard you.
Oh, Pete?
Oh, yeah, Mr. Walsh. I, I'm in the one-twenty-five range to start out, but I, I think it's going to be based upon the interview and the credentials of the person that we're interviewing and, and how much of finance background they've got, which manager really is very solid on finances and business. I, I think that's a starting place, but we're going to have to look at their, their basis and their background, I feel.
Yeah, okay, great. All right, we've got a starting point of one-twenty-five to one-thirty based on qualifications, obviously. Moving on to question number two. So the, the question here is, do you want the qualifications like the degree, experience and all that? Do you want those to be required or preferred? And the only thing I'll tell you about that is, when you, when you require more things, you dilute the pool that you're going to bring in. I mean, you have one of the, I mean, Nancy's very, I can tell you this because I've been in the Michigan business for a long time as a manager, and Nancy's very respected in the state. And if I, if I understand it correctly, seven or eight years ago when she was appointed, she was the treasurer of the community, finance director. And look how well she's done for you. And if you make, my point is, if you make things too limited on the requirements that you have to have, you're maybe not even a candidate last time. So I guess maybe just, we can move it along a little bit on the, on the bachelor's and master's degree. How many people think that a master's degree ought to be absolutely required? Required, okay, so two. So it looks like we're going to have a preferred masters. Does anybody want to debate that issue before? I don't want to, I don't want to rush things, but I know we got a lot to get through.
Oh, maybe I didn't listen closely enough. I, I had put required for bachelors and preferred for masters.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Oh, no, that's okay. Is that the genuine feel of it? How many believe that we ought to have a requirement for a bachelor's and a preferred masters? Does that seem reasonable? Okay, all right, we've got it. Now, the i- is it, is it required that they be, have been a manager of a community? Is that a requirement when you look at your candidates or is that preferred? How many say it's absolutely required that they've been a manager before?
I was leaning that way.
Okay, it looks like the majority, okay, so it looks like we might have a split here. I'll just tell you that, let me tell you a little about Alpina really quickly. Alpina was a salary up to, it's a ton of ten thousand, salary was up to one-twelve. And this was just a year and a half ago. And we brought in the Harbor Springs DDA Director. She's a Purdue graduate. She's really sharp and most recruiters had overlooked her. I brought her in with a group of five there and she actually got the job, but she's been there a year and a half now, and she's just doing a great job. So she would have never been, had we made that a requirement, would have never been able to be looked at in Alpina. So you're split on that, so I'll turn it over to you, maybe to tell me how, are we going to make it a requirement that they have been a manager before?
I can change my mind on that one.
So a preferred manager before. Anybody want to make a strong case for the other side of that?
Yeah, I, I'd like to, I mean, the, the, the problem is that all these things add together, right? So you give me someone with a master's degree who's got some, from a really decent university, who's got some great training, they've got some great experience, they haven't been a city manager, I'm going to say, yeah, that's great. Right? You got me someone with a bachelor's degree from a Podunk University who's done some stuff, but they've never been on, you know, you know, I mean, I, I don't think these things are independent, but you're right in terms of the applicant pool. We want to have, have to wide net. So agreeing to these things to get a bunch of people to apply, it may change when we talk about actual criteria we use. I, I just want to be upfront, you know, I just.
Absolutely, that makes total sense. They're not independent. It's, it's a collective group. But you're right, we'll cast the widest net possible. The National City Manager Association, that is an association made up of about eighty-five hundred to nine thousand members. And i- is it, is it absolutely important for you that the person you hire be a member of that national organization? I'm seeing, I'm seeing, anyone want to make the counterargument that yes, because I'm seeing a bunch of head shaking, no?
Because when I, when I read that, Frank, I, you know, I think we, I think, believe Nancy is a member of that group as city manager. And that might be something I'd expect of whoever we hire to become involved with that group and do a create, things like that. But to have someone that's already a member seems, you know, unless you're already a city manager, why would you be involved?
Okay. All right, I think there's some consensus on that. Moving forward to question number three. Where, this is a tough, you know, where, where are you like the experience part? Are we going to, it's preferred, it's preferred that you've been a manager before, obviously. Are you four to six years? Are you seven to nine? Are you preference for years as a manager? Any preference there? Will?
Um, I, for me, I was, I, I don't know that you have to have already been a municipal manager, so I was somewhere between no experience and one to three years. Just because I, I think that, you know, if someone already has been a manager, then I think that's great. But if they're kind of moving into that role, I, you know, I can see that as well, so.
George, you look like you have something to say.
And it's, I, you know, it sounds like I'm being obsessive and not being concerned with others. I want to hear others' opinions, but look, I, I think what's happened is we've had people internally for a while. Do you follow what I'm saying? So, so I think getting someone externally who may do some heavy lifting, who can look at stuff, I mean, you know, organizations sort of work so that, you know, they go along steady, they go along steady, and at different points, they may be at a point where you need to change some stuff. Do you follow what I'm saying? So, so I think in, in the sublifting that takes place during that, so, so I think it may be that a little bit of experience might help in, in that context, you know, it's not, I don't know how much, yeah, anyway, again, it depends on everything, but you gotta, I'm not going to say we require it, but again, when it gets down to the point where you're looking at applications and thinking about what's needed. Yeah.
How about, how about, if, does anyone disagree with this? We listed as a preferred city manager experience, but not required, and not even get into the years, just preferred that they've been a manager. Acceptable?
Yeah.
Acceptable.
All right, okay, here's where we get into the four areas. So one of the things you want to highlight is, what are the four really key areas that you, that are most important to the city right now or the next two years? And so you'd like to have the manager have some experience in those areas. So if you could just read off your four, and Mary, we'll start with you.
Okay, I started, or my four were budgeting, customer service, union negotiations, and human resources. And part of the reason I chose many of those is, even though you might have some senior staff that can do some of those jobs, I pictured Nancy being very strong in those and, and that some of them are the people skills that I would be looking for, that Nancy has.
Yes, and I'll tell you, all these responses are confidential. But I will tell you, I have a lot of responses back, and you just hit the nail on the head of what people think about your manager right now. She has, according to the people who work there, she has the blend of the knowledge and the blend of the people skills, and that's really hard to find. Who's, who's next on your four? Want to go to Olivia?
Four. I'm sorry, I, I might take some time. I didn't read it correctly and didn't pick four. I just wrote comments next to all of them, so. I'm very sorry.
That's okay.
But I'll, I'll also go with budgeting and finance. Union negotiations, human resources. And, yeah, I'll, I'll agree, the customer service also.
Thank you. How about Pete?
Frank, I had financial background, business background, union negotiations and people skills. And on your last, on number three, I think we have to have somebody that, that's got at least forty years, four to seven years' experience.
Okay.
We lucked out with Nancy because she's been in this organization for a while and has done an outstanding job. But she's got a lot of background in, in all the areas. And I'm not for going out and hiring a manager that we have to bring in here and, you know, he's hands-on learning. I, I'm not for that. I'd rather pay a little more money and get somebody that's experienced and has got a little, little each area in here.
Yeah. I, I get that totally, Pete. I, I really believe from what I know about the market and I know about people's affinity from Mount Pleasant CMU, I believe at one-twenty-five to one-thirty, you're going to attract managers who are already managers in Michigan and, and probably beyond. Can we jump over to Amy?
Um, I agree with Olivia and Mary. Budgeting and finances, the customer service, union negotiations and human resources.
Okay, thank you very much. George?
Yeah, I, I don't have anything different. I, I agree with the first four as well. But I'd like to add, I, I'd like to speak also to what Pete talked about as usual, right? But I, I think business development is important to me. So, so I want someone who can stimulate ratables, who can stimulate business in the community and sort of who has that sensitivity of growing the community and being very supportive of business.
And, and Will?
Um, mine are very consistent with everyone else's, except with one exception. I did budgeting and finance, negotiations, and exemplary customer service. My difference was I was planning and zoning as important to me.
Okay, so we really have about six or seven. That's interesting. There were really, four of them really stood out, then there were three or four, the business development, the planning and zoning that also were thrown in, so, and the, good, we've got a really solid list of four there. Moving on. Okay, here's the one, personal characteristics. And this is so, you know, this is one that I always say is can get a little hokey. Because if you, if, if I give you a list of, we want them to be thoughtful and, and kind and, and, you know, well, you're, you're going to check all those boxes. you know, well, you're, you're gonna check all those boxes. That's kind of silly and a waste of time in my mind. You check all twenty. What I'm interested in is just describe the type of person. When you sit across the interview table, what kind of person are you looking for? What are the key things? No boxes to check off here, just tell me what you think and we'll go in reverse order here. We'll start with Will.
So, yeah, I think I originally, you know, I kind of jotted down some of those things that you were kind of mentioning, like, yeah, everybody knows, you know, you want someone who's loyal and courteous and all that. Um, I think, you know, from my, just, you know, working with Nancy and and in this setting and then working with just people in my normal dated, you know, day-to-day job. I want someone who, when I talk to them, I can tell that they're they're knowledgeable about what we're talking about, they're thinking about how to solve problems. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna leave with the confidence that um, that we had good communication with each other and that we know where we're at and that they're gonna, they're gonna follow up. Um, okay, so you know, someone who's really uh you know, I I guess, you know, is gonna get after it, is a, is a go-getter and um, is gonna do what they have to do to get the job done, I suppose.
So a go-getter, someone who's gonna follow up, someone who communicates while they're confident, when you're talking to them, they know what they're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Uh, George?
Yeah, intelligence and problem-solving skills. That's about it. The rest I can live with.
George, I didn't hear you. What did you say?
Uh, intelligence and problem-solving skills. The other characteristic, I'm good with.
Okay, uh, Amy?
I think Frank, did you call on me? I couldn't, I couldn't hear.
Oh, I said Amy.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. Um, well, you know, I train people in problem solving, so problem-solving skills are, you know, top priority. Um, also, um, you know, that drive for learning. I know that Nancy is constantly, um, you know, looking for new workshops and doing new things and learning new stuff for us, which I really appreciate. And that's something, that intelligence and that drive for learn, to learn, and also that whole um, just being active in the community. Being willing to be out there, yeah.
Yeah, that's really, really important, um, that involvement in the community level. Uh, Pete?
Uh, Frank, uh, I think this area is, is important to me. I've been a business member of this community since nineteen sixty. Uh, and I think Nancy's done an excellent job. I've never heard a local businessperson or somebody in the community, you know, complain against her. Uh, she's always had good communication, good problem solving, willing to listen to everybody, always willing to make an appointment. Really hands-on. And and I think this is important, uh, you know, that the person that we select uh, is gonna have to be a good communicator, good problem solver. Uh, and Nancy's very business-minded. If she doesn't know something, she's gonna research it and get back with you. And she always immediately does. So, I mean, we have to have a hands-on person.
Okay, so to summarize, Pete, strong business skills, problem-solving, a hands-on, accessible, good communicator, business-minded. Thank you. Um, Olivia?
Yeah, um, so I'd say I appreciate the qualitative uh questions, even though they're a little harder to brainstorm answers to. Um, I, what I came up with was uh knowledgeable or provides expertise of policy, maybe business operations, um innovative, creative, and brings in fresh ideas. Um, encourages independence and open communication with staff and people they work with. Um, I've heard problem solving and drive for learning and active in the community are all really good. And I didn't come up with those, but I have to agree with them and add them to my list.
Okay.
Also, something that I really appreciate about Nancy is that she's been really approachable. Um, especially as a new commissioner, it's been really easy to go to her and ask questions. Um, and she's come to me and make sure that I'm like understanding things, and I'd really like to see that in a new city manager to be approachable.
So knowledge on pos- on policy, innovative, creative, fresh ideas, open communicative, active in the community, problem-solving, and approachable. Thank you. Uh, Mary?
I don't think I need to add to that list.
We just identified, uh, we just identified Nancy Ridley. Okay, all right, thank you. Um, let's move on. That was question five. Okay, so question six. And this is where it gets, um, this is the most difficult question. Um, and again, even if we have some disagreement here, and if the list comes out and you you like seven of them, but you don't like the one, this is just a blueprint. It's not gonna be the master plan, it's not gonna be the capital improvement uh plan. It's just some kind of idea of what the new manager would be looking at. Um, so this takes some time. Uh, if you can give me um as succinct as you can, the five things that you think the manager should be working on in the first year, eighteen months, what are the most important things to Mount Pleasant? And we'll start with Olivia.
Oh goodness, okay. I only came up with three. Um, these probably aren't extensive, but um, the, the three challenges or opportunities I had were um the marijuana licensing. Um, I know that's probably something that's gonna be coming up um, for a new manager, and it's important that they are able to take that on. Um, the impacts that COVID has had on businesses and the population here. Um, and expansion, and then our declining population with um the college as well. Those were my three.
Okay, so declining enrollment at CMU, COVID implications on residents and businesses, and marijuana licensing.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, we'll move on to Will.
Sure. So I actually did like five of each, just because I wasn't quite sure, but um, and I'll go through them, and if you, if you, that's all right, Frank?
Sure, yep, looking for five, five, well, I'm just looking, uh, opportunities and challenges that we consider an opportunity is a challenge, challenges enough. So just five are what I really need. What are your top five?
Okay. Um, uh, I think, you know, under challenges and I suppose opportunities, we do have that declining uh CMU population, and that's, it's gonna be an economic challenge. Um, I think for the city manager, uh, I think union employee um, age bracket, basically, we have a lot of people who are gonna be up for retirement soon. And so that's certainly gonna be a challenge for the city manager. Um, I think uh we do have good finances. I think the city's in in good financial shape. Um, we have a strong infrastructure. And I've got, I've got some other ones that are kind of like, you know, fit in that fifth spot, but um I I think one thing, we have, you know, we have strong staff, and I think for the city manager, that's gonna be important. Um, and so that's a real opportunity for them to have that lot of institutional knowledge.
So declining CMU population, um, the number of union employee retirements coming up, maintaining our solid financial state, maintaining our strong infrastructure, and how would you define the last one, Will?
Yeah, like our staff is very knowledgeable, they're uh, I think we do a lot with the number of people that we have on on our staff. And so, um.
So inherit, you're gonna inherit a strong and seasoned uh and talented team.
Yeah, 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 the way to put it.
Great, thank you. Amy?
Um, I've got a couple of them. Um, obviously, COVID is a top priority. Um, helping our business community um reset itself, our economics in that sense. Um, I would also say that the declining student enrollment at at the university is very important. Understanding how to negotiate that. Um, an opportunity slash challenge is working with the university closer in some of the um projects that we could be doing. And uh just the, you know, the maintain, maintaining our um or creating and maintaining our sustainability. Um, we have a beautiful park system and waterway and, you know, how, you know, getting fresh ideas on how to um, improve it and maintain it and really develop it, so it's um a, a place of interest.
Okay, thank you. George?
Yeah, I I don't know that I have a whole, I'll, I just want to comment about the declining university enrollment though. I mean, we've had twenty thousand students bring their parents' money to CMU to Mount Pleasant and spend it. Right? We're gonna be down to about fourteen thousand students doing that. So, so if you look at the impact it has on rental properties, owners of rental properties, um, if you look at the impact on the general money in the community, I mean, so I think business development and rethinking um, what are ratables and what's gonna generate income from the city communities is very large. Uh, the second thing in terms of bringing on additional employees, um, what, what becomes important to me as well is someone who is familiar with maybe transitioning from a pension system to a 401K, or someone who has some understanding of how over the long term. Uh, because when you look at our budget, the amount where we've got um already leveraged for those uh pension layouts is significant. So, so I think, you know, the, the employee changeover, the dealing with the unions, um, business development, dealing with, and you know, and the other thing is, I I think the city has been divorced from the university for many years. You know, the university has just done its thing, the city has benefited, they haven't had to do anything. And I think what Amy said in terms of having the manager work with the city, with, excuse me, with the university. Will calls it making Mount Pleasant cool, but you know, we're gonna have to start to realize that we need to work with the university to make the city cool, to draw the population. So all those things to me are, it's not within the first eighteen months, yeah.
Thank you. And Amy, my apologies, I did not um coalesce your comments at the end. But COVID helping the business community uh reset itself, declining CMU enrollment, negotiating through that, working closely with CMU as a university, and maintaining and creating creative sustainability. And um, George, uh, I I've never heard that number before. I've heard a lot of people talk about the declining role of about twenty to fourteen thousand?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two to fourteen.
Yeah, yeah, I know. I mean, I, I don't know what the exact numbers are gonna be this fall, but they're, they're in a decrease, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, and transit, and also transitioning from a defined benefit to a defined contributions pension system.
Well, I, there's an argument about that. I I don't wanna, but you know, I think you know, it's real, if we bring on new employees, a lot of people are gonna retire, if you bring on new employees. Obviously, employees that are here have the pension, but you know, how about, yeah.
Right, and stronger, potential stronger relationship with CMU and employee turnover. Um, Mary?
Well, I'll just mention mine that aren't repetitive.
Okay.
At least to some degree. Um, for challenges, I put business growth. Um, just, we've had so many of our businesses close, and it'd be nice to do what we can as a city to encourage reopenings or new ownership, whatever on that. And then, as an opportunity, I think one of our strengths is that we have many civic and human interest groups in town. And then I mentioned things about central and infrastructure and stuff like that, but those were kind of the different ones.
Okay, thank you. Business growth, infrastructure. Uh, Pete?
CMU is one I like to touch on, that George touched on. Uh, enrollment was up at uh right around a little over twenty-some thousand. The semester before last was like eleven-seven, and now you see an increase of, I think it's uh two point seven percent that they're gonna increase in tuition now, which I don't think is gonna help the enrollment at all. Uh, not only that, they're getting rid of a lot of tenured professors that are prime professors, and you're going to a pool now with less experienced professors, bringing them in to try to save money, which I think is gonna be a problem there. You also have CMU with their enterprise zone on the uh south end of town that competes with the rest of the business district that pays no tax on their property. So, somebody's gonna have to develop something in the city here, it's gonna have to compete with them that aren't paying the tax base. So, uh, you know, I'm a CMU graduate, but basically, they're a business entity, so
Yeah.
competition there. Uh, another thing is I'm thinking this manager's gotta come in, has got to be business-orientated, do wanna bring businesses in here to develop things. Uh, I'll tell you right now, and I think that's gonna have to tie in with ordinances where this manager's gonna have to be up to date on ordinances and and how these ordinances are being developed under him. Uh, I'll give you one instance, on the corner of Pickard, Main Street, right now, there's a project, there's a building that's been dilapidated. It's been there for the last twelve, fourteen years that a project just came in for a gas station and another development, it was a fifteen million dollar project, that got shot down. It got shot down, because the ordinance says the pumps have to be off Pickard and back, way back on the lot. That just doesn't make sense to me. You've got a project that's gonna remove that and create a tax base of seventy, eighty thousand dollars a year, generate jobs and everything else, and you're shooting it down? It it doesn't make common sense to me. So that's why I'm saying we have to have somebody that's business-orientated that's gonna come in and develop this, cuz this is gonna develop our tax base, our employment and everything else. So I think that's very important, Frank. And then I had uh replacement of staff, you know, down on the bottom. We got a lot of people that are retiring, that are gonna have to be replaced. And I I think that's gonna be a little bit of a problem.
Okay, CMU, business-oriented ordinances, and staff retirements. One of the things I'm noticing that's coming in a lot, um, well, we'll get to that with attractions on the next question. Um, let's move over to question number seven. Um, and this is important because you get a chance to describe your own community. And maybe, cuz this ad is gonna go out nationwide, and some people who obviously have never been to Mount Pleasant before. So what, how would you describe uh the community in just five words to people who've never been here before? And uh, why don't we start with Amy?
Okay, so, um, one of the things that I think, when I think of Mount Pleasant, I think of, um, and it's, and it's kind of futuristic too, but that we have a small-town feel, but we have big opportunities. And that's what I think, when I think about Mount Pleasant, that's what I think about. And that we have a beautiful park system that's you know, that people take advantage of all the time, and I think it's awesome.
Okay, anything else?
Um, outside of the university, no, I mean.
Okay. All right, um, let's go over to Pete.
Uh, I feel it's a small town, great community, friendly people. Uh, you know, like I said, I've lived here since nineteen sixty-one, so. I had a lot of friends that are in the oil and gas industry and uh business friends, and uh it, it's just a great community. You know, I've lived in Chicago before when I first grew up, and uh this is totally different, and people say, well, how do you live in a small town? Well, this is a great small town, as far as I'm concerned.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Uh, Will?
Um, so I guess I kinda listened to just a few things. For someone who's never been here before, some things that they would kind of hit right off, we have strong education institutions, not only just CMU, but also our public schools. Um, we're obviously very centrally located in the state of Michigan, and I think that's one of our strengths. Um, because if you wanna go, if you wanna go to Detroit, or you wanna go to Traverse City, it's a two-hour drive either way. Uh, you know, you can, you can do a lot when you're, when you live here. Um, we're uh, we're sort of an agricultural town. I don't think Mount Pleasant so much, but we're obviously, we're surrounded by a lot of farming. Um, I think that's important to note. Um, uh, I I think that that small-town, big, big feel is something that I often describe people when, um, you know, they ask about Mount Pleasant, like my friends and family who live in Metro Detroit. Like, yeah, we're a smaller town, but we have a lot of big things happening, and I think that's the collision of, obviously, you know, um, the tribe, CMU, um, where our location is a, you know, a one-twenty-seven hub. So I, I, you know, we have a lot of things going on that a normal-sized town, or a town our size may not have. So.
All right. Anything else?
Oh, no, I think that covers it.
Okay, Mary?
Well, some of my single-word descriptions are a little bit longer, but not too much. Um, I, my first one was safe. And then walkable, bikeable. I I think we're improving on that. We're getting closer. And then Chippewa River slash parks. You know, the parks don't have to be connected to the Chippewa River, but most of them are. And then I put downtown and schools.
Okay, thank you. George?
George, George, you're muted.
I don't have a lot to add. I think a small town feel with big opportunities. You know, the casino brings in nationally ranked entertainment. The university has great science. You know, we have wonderful pie. I, I don't have anything to add, actually. I think.
Thank you. Olivia?
Yeah, to be honest, I don't really have anything new to add. I think covers it. The biggest thing for me is that, yeah, small town. Big opportunity, lots to do and our park system for sure is a big part of our community.
Yeah, I, in my research here to put in the request for proposals, I did a lot of research on your park system and it's, it really is phenomenal. Okay, moving on, we're, we're, hey, we're already to seven, question seven, or no, question eight. What are the top attractions? When you, what are the five things that I should note? About the community as the attractions to come here? Why would candidates want to come here or people want to come here? And let's start with George.
I don't, again, parks, casino, education and potential for economic growth.
Olivia?
Okay, I only have three. Our park system, biggest one. Our small businesses, our downtown area. And then education, even outside of CMU.
Pete?
I think our casino, education, the parks. And then oil related businesses because at one time, Mount Pleasant was the oil capital of Michigan. And there are still a lot of the oil service based companies that are based here out of Mount Pleasant.
You know, I wondered, thank you for filling in the blanks because I always wondered how Mount Pleasant Oilers got their nickname. Now I know. Thank you for that. Will?
I'm probably going to sound a little bit like a broken record, but. In no particular order, I think our parks and recreation are obviously something that. Is big for us. I think, you know, I thought of something that man versus mountains, a great event in the wintertime. It's something that kind of helps us stick out, I think, at least locally in the region. Bicycling, walking, we have, I think we do, we're a great community for pedestrians and non-motorized transportation. I've brought up, you know, sort of things related with the tribe and the casino. We have powwow. We've got a lot of concerts like national acts. In the casino. I think the outdoors, Michigan outdoors were, you know, there's a lot of like great recreational opportunities nearby. It's something that I personally really enjoy about living in Mount Pleasant is that. I can do a lot of, you know, outdoor activities without sometimes leaving town or just a short drive. And then really just sort of our community and like our summer downtown, I thought of. The Max and Emily's concert series, our farmer's market is really strong. I think that those are really things that stand out for me.
Thank you very much. Mary?
Well, broken record again, parks system, casino, downtown. And I know sometimes we talk about how. Our downtown suffers by not being on a business route, but at the same time, I think that's a benefit of it. You know, that you go downtown on purpose, not because you have to. Anyhow, and then I mentioned Max and Emily concerts like Will said. And then Island Park in itself, when it's not flooded, is a treasure. Part of that is because we're a softball and baseball team and Island Park has softball fields. And now they also, now instead of just tennis, they have tennis and pickleball. And they have sand volleyball too. And they have a walking path all the way around it.
Pickleball is really growing. Yeah, it really is. Yeah. Amy?
Well, the first thing I think of is the the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe. And all of the resources that they have and all of the things that they give to our community. In just being who they are, the powwow, the, their centers down there, their two percent funding, things like that. Our park system is very important, you know, like Island Park, you can find, you can either go to the skate park or do pickleball or do tennis. Or do softball or do volleyball or do baseball or do run the track or whatever. There's tons of things and the river system for tubing and canoeing. But it's also, you know, our community organizations and resources that we have. Like the the Broadway Theater, that is a community theater. We have the farmer's market, Max and Emily's concerts. I'm hoping that the city will be able to do, you know, soon, maybe in the fall or something, the. The beer festival that we had, the craft beer, because we brought in a lot of really great. You know, groups with that and music and things like that. So we just have a lot of, we got a lot of pluses.
Yeah, cultural events. I think we made, I think we made it around the table on that. And now let's move on to, we're nearing the end here, question nine. You're now talking to somebody who lives six states away and you're trying, you really like them as a candidate. I'm going to be talking to them. I want to encourage them to come to Mount Pleasant. What are the, what are the. The three things that you want to tell me that to to really sell Mark Mount Pleasant? What, how do you encourage? You have, you know, like one minute to talk to this person. And what three things do you tell them in your closing comments about your community? We'll start with Mary.
Okay, number one, we are a good neighbor with our local Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe. With our county, with our surrounding townships and with CMU. And then number two, we are truly the middle of the mitt. You can get anywhere from here in the lower peninsula in three hours. And then for my number three, I had two of them. I couldn't pick. I can let the group decide on this one, but. I said, we're a good mix of young and old, and then I'm hearing about all these people retiring, so I don't know if you consider that a strength. So my other number three is we have a, a safe community with low crime.
Thank you. Amy?
Well, the, the first thing I would say is that we are the middle of the mint. We are called Mount Pleasant, not flat nasty. We have beautiful weather. We usually don't have this much rain, but I think all of the state got this much rain. You know, we're, we're good neighbors. We take care of each other. And we're supportive of not only the people, the residents that live within our city, but of the neighboring. Areas, you know, the townships, the union township donuts us and the tribe is very important to us. We're, we're definitely good neighbors.
Okay, thank you. Well, Will?
Um, I had, I think something that really enticed, someone who's going to be a perfect fit. And they're from out of state, I think that they should know, obviously, we're a small college town. But we have, you know, division one sports, strong education institutions and. And, you know, top national level entertainment in our area. I think that's going to be a draw for someone. We have a lot of opportunities for recreation. And our community has a lot of, you know, our community works really well together. I think this is something that. Kind of keeps coming up lately in some of our meetings is that, you know, our, with our partners in the, in the community like. MMBC and the tribe and the township and the county. We've, we've got strong relationships there. And so whoever fills the city manager role is going to have those strong relationships to. To learn about opportunities and it's. I think there's a lot of room for like innovation and, and, you know, someone wants to, you know, do big things, that's, it's, it's there if the city. You know, has those opportunities, which I think a lot of opportunities to fight for, so.
Thank you. George?
Yeah, I, I would tell them that it's all about quality of life. That it's low cost. The house I have is moderately, probably a little highly priced here for the, for Mount Pleasant. It had run over a million dollars in the major city. It, it, it takes me five minutes at most to commute to work. Work-life balance is just huge. Everybody, you know, you don't have to worry about having time for your kids. The community will help out. It's a good work-life balance. Good medical services. The university has a medical school. It's increased the quality, I would argue at least, but I think increased the quality of medical care. I mean, so if you really want a good quality of life, I'm not going to say no stress, but low stress. You can have the things you want, not very expensive. Good life balance, one down.
Thank you. Pete?
Well, we might be a small town, but we're a community of people of good values.
Thank you. Olivia?
All right, yeah, the, the thing that I really want to stress is that small town feel. We have a great feeling of connection to the community, but also, you know, a lot of opportunities to be active in the community. And a lot of things to do here. So while it feels small town, it's also very vibrant and we have a lot of ways to be an active part in the community. Second, it's safe, it's walkable, it's bikeable. We have the river, beautiful parks. So not only active in community, but active in nature as well. And then third, I think we have a really unique and awesome. Population and that we have people coming in to CMU. You know, they learn a lot and then they might go to other parts of the community. So there's that like fresh idea turnover, but also people who have lived here. Their entire lives and they're really passionate about the community. And we have great relationships with the tribe and the college and neighboring communities. I don't know if you can say that about everywhere and I think that that's a really strong part of our community.
Well, thank you for that. Really appreciate. Now, so tonight we've had feedback from seven and imagine we're going to have feedback from fifty-four. So all that information gets condensed down, but as you can see, it's interesting, just the city or the county commission tonight. I'm sorry, the city commission, you can see that you're, if you listen to what you're talking about, it coalesces together really well. You know, there's not a lot of out here and over here and all that. It's, it's really, it's really amazing if you sit back and listen to what everyone's saying here. Is there anything that I didn't ask? That you want to tell me at this time? Anything you want to share with me that I missed? Just.
We're going to do number ten?
Yeah, number ten, if there's anything else. Yeah, I thought number ten was, is there anything else that you want to tell me?
Just number ten.
Is there anything you want to tell me about the recruitment process that I didn't ask tonight?
Oh, I see.
Will, did, Mary, did you have something?
Well, I, I really have a question for Heather. Have you, have you been here long enough to be able to answer these questions?
It's interesting that you asked that. I started the end of March. I was given a survey. Some of them I found a little challenging and some of them came very easy for me. So in making the transition recently, some of that was very easy to come by.
Will, did you have something?
Yeah, I, I don't know where this fits and I guess it's something that maybe. It kind of falls under those opportunity challenges and I, I think it's something because we're a river town. You know, we do have, we have water management issues and that's, it's obviously also an opportunity for recreation, but I thought it was something that. The next city manager is likely to deal with that, you know, at least locally and regionally, that, you know, someone's. Not that they need to be an expert in, you know, in, in drain management, but that is something that. Infrastructure and in that water resource management is going to be something that really comes into play, I think, for us over the next ten years and so. But that's. I just. Hope that was something. Nope, yeah.
Thank you. Anything else that we missed? If, if not, I have about thirteen pages of notes I've taken. The only other thing that we need to. And I do appreciate all of the time. You were very well prepared for this and I appreciate, we did all that in less than an hour. And I will contact Commissioner Gillis to get her feedback as well to make sure I close the loop with that in the next couple of days. I don't have a lot. I've got one week. And I have to turn this over to you. Now, even though I took fifty responses from fifty-four. Individuals, only the seven of you get back, get a final draft and you're the ones who have a final say on what goes out. My kid, you know, that doing that in three days is going to be enough. So you'll be this, the, the, the city commission will be the ones who put the final blessing on the, just remember when you get it back. I've written fifty, sixty, seventy of these and I kind of, I kind of know. How do I say this without being braggy? I kind of know what candidates want to see and what they want to hear about a community. So it'll be written in a certain way to do that. The last thing that I wanted to cover tonight is be thinking about an interview date. Because we were, we had targeted the, typically you'd want to interview four or five finalists. What will happen is on August sixteenth. I'll be meeting with you in closed session. Candidates will, under the law, candidates that request confidentiality are allowed to go into a closed session. So, and they will all do that. And so I'll bring in probably seven or eight of the top candidates, depending on what the draw is. The target's about eight of the strongest candidates. You go over those in detail in closed session and by number, then when you come out of that meeting, you'll choose your four or five by number. Because they're still confidential. They're confidential until such a time when they accept a public interview. And so I have to contact them after you name them the finalists and make sure they're all in. And then I turn it back over to the clerk and the manager saying. Yes, we have our finalist. So the only other important date is we start.
Before you, before you move on from that, August sixteenth is not one of their standard city commission meeting nights, so that would be a special meeting. So we need, before we set that, we need to make sure that everybody's available that night to be able to do that. And seeing some head nods is, Olivia, Pete, does that work for you?
I gotta check my calendar and get back with you on it, but it should be open. What day is that fall? What's days of sixteen fall?
Monday.
Monday?
It's, it's the third Monday.
Okay, so if, if that's the date, then what you would, what we, the tentative plan was to interview on the twenty-eighth on Saturday. But I understand that date's not going to work. So the difficulty is if you're interviewing four or five, it's really hard to do it on a weeknight because if you do, you got to start at five. And you go five, six, seven, eight, nine, you're done at ten o'clock and you're exhausted and you, you forget who you even interviewed one and two. And then if you try to do it on two weeknights, you know, go six and seven and eight and interview five over two nights. It's really unfair is what I have found. It's really inherently unfair to the people who interview the first night. Because they really kind of get lost in the shuffle on that. So I don't know how we're, I don't know that we'll solve this tonight, but be thinking about how do we come up with a date. For the interviews and you'd want to have it within a couple of weeks after August sixteen. So that's what we're facing. I take suggestions. Yes.
Why doesn't the twenty, the twenty, somebody has a conflict with the twenty-eighth or? Yeah, okay, okay.
I know I do. I've got, I've got a mandatory class that I can't skip.
Yeah, so I guess we'll, we'll work on a date. We probably won't be able to, I don't know. Nancy, did you plan on trying to set one tonight? Would that be?
Yeah, I was hoping to get some general agreement on it so we could officially set it and get it locked into people's calendars because otherwise it's going to become. Difficult if we wait.
We just wouldn't have the time or.
I don't know. Will, are you available on any Saturdays or is that your class you're taking?
My class is every like third Saturday. I typically work on Saturdays at three P. I typically work on Saturdays at three P M. Though if, if it's, if it's in the morning, obviously it's very easy for me. If it, if we want to do the evening, I would have to talk to my, my boss and try to. Find some, find some way to get around that.
Will, are you open the twenty-first?
I am currently before, before three basically right now, but I could. If the rest of the commission feels like, hey, that's the day we want to do it, I certainly can, you know, try to take the day off or something.
But Frank, does that give you enough time if they're not picking candidates till the sixteenth?
Uh, no, but what we could do is we could back that up. So let me refresh my memory here. July ninth is when we're. So the deadline for Mount Pleasant is August sixth.
Can I ask another question? But I mean, does it have to be on a Saturday? Is, is there some reason we can't do it on a work, on a Friday? Or, or you can't do it, Frank, or you don't?
No, no, we could do it whenever you want. We could, we could do it on a Fri- if, if, if the, if the city commission wants to do it on a Friday night, we could do it on a Friday. We could start at.
Friday during the day. Do you work on Fridays, Will?
Yeah, I work at Fridays at three P M.
What days don't you work?
Well, if you work at.
Yeah, Commissioner Gillis indicated that a, a work, a weekday would be her last choice.
Yeah, and you know, and you can't do it, uh, Will, you can't do it on a Saturday, because we can go nine, ten, eleven. Have a little break for lunch and be finished by two thirty with five people. We can be finished by two thirty. But so, but the twenty-eighth, you have a, the twenty-eighth is out, so would be the, it would be the twenty-first. We just, we would have to. We would have to move the August ninth, is that a commission meeting night?
Yes, it is.
Okay, we could do August, if I worked over that weekend. It got you a packet on the seventh, because the deadline's the sixth. If I had it all wrapped up and got you a packet off right away. On the eighth, or on the ninth, you'd have, you know, a couple of days to look it over. And on the ninth, we could meet after your city commission meeting in closed session. And, and it doesn't take, it would probably take forty-five minutes at, at the most to choose your, your four or five. And then you, so we could do that. We could have it on the ninth, Nancy, and then have the interviews on the twenty-first.
I wouldn't want to stress you, Frank. I, I mean, I, you know, I. You working over the weekend doesn't sound like fun.
Oh, you know what? That's what I do. This is, this is my hobby. I'm not a golfer or boater and I don't know how to play chess, so.
You know how to play pickleball.
I'm a trivia guy though, so I'm happy about that vote tonight. But we could do the ninth and twenty-first if that meets with the, your approval.
I'm fine with that.
And we want to do the morning?
On the twenty-first?
Yeah, that way you'd be out by two thirty, Will?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well, Mike, we have a schedule. So you will get a, you will get an electronic. Packet from me sometime on the seventh on Saturday. Sometime, and then I'll get it to you on the seventh, so you have the eighth and ninth to look it over. And it's just going to be a resume and a candidate questionnaire from each of the eight candidates. So we have our dates. Is there anything else, Nancy, that I missed or that we need to cover tonight?
I was just wondering, do we go through question ten?
Yeah, yeah, we did. I did. I, the only thing on question ten I got was your comment, Will, about infrastructure and water resource management.
Oh, I thought that was nine. I'm, I'm ready with a good number ten.
Any, any, anything else?
What is your number ten, Mary? I said, ours is a town where CMU may bring you here, but you will want to stay. And then I could expand it, but that was the short version of it.
Okay. That could be our tagline.
I did, I, for number ten, I guess I thought it was really important that we have some. You know, some face-to-face interaction potentially, hopefully with, with, I think, staff and the commissioners. With the, with the, you know, sort of narrowed down pool of candidates. I think it's important to get a sort of a feel for someone when you're staying in the same room. Before I think we make a final decision. That was, that's kind of what I wanted to add for ten, but.
Okay, yeah, we could, we could do staff, we can have, however you want to do it, we can do a staff interview, we can do a community tours on Friday. Friday night, we can set up where we do tours of the community. There's a bunch of different ways we could do it. And we can have that input later on as we move forward. But I'm excited. I think you've got a great story to tell in Mount Pleasant and I'm anxious to take that story out to the state and to the world.
Thank you, Frank.
Yeah, I will just tell you, just a real, I know it's been a long night, but just a real brief story, something I'm really proud of. I just finished the recruitment at Blissfield. You may not know where Blissfield, it's a really little community down in Lenawee County by Adrian, by Toledo. And their goal was to, they've never had a female manager and their goal was to bring somebody in who. Knew something about Lenawee County. And it's a town of three thousand, salary of seventy to seventy-five thousand. We found a community development director and her name's Danielle Gross. She's from Tecumseh, she's from Lenawee County, living in Wyoming, and a community development director. And she was just selected, her contract was just approved. And so she'll be starting in Blissfield. In the next couple of months. I'm really excited about that. She's going to be, it's just a great find for that community.
You told us that story on our committee, but the other commissioners might have thought that you just meant Wyoming, Michigan. You didn't mean Wyoming, Michigan, did you?
No.
Wyoming, Wyoming.
Yes.
Yeah.
Rawlings, Wyoming, yep, yep, that's how far our reach goes and we'll be looking really hard for you, so. And if you, if there's anything that comes up between, over the next couple of weeks, you'll be getting a lot of updates from me. Every week you're getting an update on where we're at, number of resumes, kind of what they look like. What the type of resumes we're seeing, now what they look like. And you'll, you'll be, you'll be in constant communication about what's going on and. I've enjoyed working with Suzanne and Nancy and Eddie and we're going to get this thing rolling in the next week. You'll have a draft a week from tonight.
Great.
I'm finished, Mayor.
Okay, I actually have one question for you and I. You know, it's been a long night, but for the community profile, you've been interviewing like community stakeholders, right, with the questionnaire? I was just wondering who those, who those stakeholders?
Let me tell you, the Charter Township of Union, I think it's the township manager. Isabella County County Manager Margaret McAvoy, Sagawa, Saganochipua Indian Tribe Eric Rodriguez. Mount Pleasant Area Chamber of Commerce Doug Wallace, the C V B Chris Rowley. The mid, Middle Michigan Development Corporation Jim McBride. C M U R C Aaron String, the schools Jennifer Verling, Verliger, Verliger. C M U Nick Long, Central Michigan History District Health Department Steve Hall, Economic Development Boards Jeff Smith. Planning Commission Wesley Honi, Mount Pleasant Foundation Amanda Schaefer, United Way Annie Shavers. And the Chippewa River District Library Cory Frederick. That's, that's, that's the list and then all your department heads, your union representatives. And then your five members of your. Directors, your administrative assistant Addie and your legal counsel, I believe it was Mr. Homer, Homer, if I recall. Homer, yep, and then of course, all of you.
Yeah, I think that's a very good list.
Yeah, oh, I want to thank Nancy and Suzanne put that list together. It's very comprehensive, but I'm getting really a great response rate back. Usually the response rate is usually in the seventy percent range and I'm going to be up in the mid eighties tonight.
It's good.
Okay, Frank, anything else you need?
No, I'm just excited and ready to go.
Okay. It's nine twenty-eight, I guess, if there's anything else. Nancy, did you need anything from the commission before we go?
No, sir.
All right. We can. Nine twenty-eight. Good night, everybody.
Night.